Welcome folks, welcome to AJ's special session. We have a special guest. First and foremost, let's go over ground rules real quick as always. This is a no knowledge shaming space. We're not expecting you to have information on this prior, but if you were interested, there are resources on the website about the topic that we're going to be having. There's no such thing as a stupid question, but you can ask a question in a harmful way. So please be cognizant of the person that you are asking the question to and how you were asking that question. If you do not have the language to ask the question, just state that. I don't know exactly how to ask this question, but I would like to know this. That way we limit the amount of harm that's causing this space. And also, if you do not know how to pronounce our special guest's name, please just ask, because I would rather you ask and say correctly than butcher it. Alright, everybody good with that? Solid. Always, 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 please feel free to engage in the chat, ask questions. This will be recorded, so folks can catch up with it later in case you have to leave and go do stuff. Also, it's Friday and it's sunny in Seattle. I understand that that is very rare considering it was just raining for a couple of days. So I, as a Seattleite, I understand what a sunny Friday means, so I get that. And then we will have a good time. Hopefully, we will keep it to the amount of time that we want, we have allotted. And also, this is CP and we have no concept of time as well. So special guest, if you can please unmute and let's get started. First and foremost, please introduce yourself and pronounce your name so that folks can understand how to say it correctly.
Yeah, my name is Tekeah Johnson and I'm from Virginia.
Awesome. And if you feel comfortable, what schools did you attend?
Yeah, so I actually attended Virginia Commonwealth University. For my undergraduate degree, I studied financial planning and economics in undergrad. And then I went to Liberty University online for my masters in higher education administration.
Woo, I mean, look, I was just happy to get through undergrad. So congratulations for those accomplishments. And can you tell us what you do and where and what age ranges you work with?
Yeah, so right now, I'm the graduate program coordinator for the Institute for Biomedical Sciences at Georgia State University. A mouthful. Essentially, I work with graduate students who are pursuing their graduate degrees in biomedical science. Biomedical science specifically infectious diseases, immunology, virology. All of this stuff, we just finished going through with COVID vaccine development, that good stuff. So I follow all of the students from the time that they're admitted to the time that they graduate. And then the students I typically work with are, I think the youngest we've had is 20, and then the oldest I've had is 70, so.
That's a wide range.
It is.
Um, so what does a typical day look like? Because first of all, I'm still trying to get a hold of like the title of what you do, which sounds amazing and also like it sounds like a lot. So what could a typical, a typical day for Tekeah look like?
So I don't really have typical days. Every day is different. And then from one month to another, what I do, it looks really different. So say in the fall semester, my days could be me traveling somewhere to maybe California. I've been to Hawaii for recruiting events, recruiting students who might be interested in our masters and our doctoral program. And then on other days, I could be advising students, helping students pick their course selections for a semester. I also do all of the backend work, so I might be one day learning a computer language that I need to make sure that the students' courses show up in the way that they're supposed, they're supposed to. And then another day, I could be planning a graduation for our students. So it really depends. I, I really have my hands in everything that you could think of that would touch a graduate program.
Hmm, and about how many students do you work with in that program?
We have 46 now, I believe.
Okay, and are you the sole like contact for some of these students as far as like this position?
Yeah, so because the institute is still fairly new, I'm the only one that works in graduate studies right now. And then my director kind of handles some of the higher level stuff, but my, I'm pretty much the person for the day-to-day operations.
Woo, um, I'm still, again, still trying to, still try. Considering we're in a pandemic and you're working with folks who possibly could have gotten us out of this faster. Um, it's, it sounds like it's a really important position to have somebody who actually advocates for, for students. So, um, what experiences did you have in the education system that you feel influenced like your work now?
I definitely think I have a unique perspective. Ever since I've gotten into higher education, I've always been the youngest by several decades. And then I think I also had a unique experience because I was working with graduate students who were around my same age. And I was also working full-time in then, in a graduate program full-time. So I noticed that when I was applying for, when I was applying for graduate programs, I was noticing the admissions process had changed a lot, obviously, from undergrad. And I realized I didn't really have a lot of guidance on what I was supposed to be submitting, what areas are valued, what should I put a spotlight on in order to be differentiated from other students? So I just really felt in the dark about everything. And then also, looking at within my career, I was also noticing that there were a lot of students that looked a lot like me, who were also experiencing the same thing, but the only difference was they had me and I was able to kind of understand their issues in that regard and kind of help them fill in the blanks a lot easier than, say, other students who are solely relying on information that's maybe on a website or something like that. So I think definitely my experience as a graduate student in tandem with my work with graduate students really helped me identify some of the weak spots on the front end that students of color might fall into specifically.
Right. Um, and is your institution what would be considered an HBCU? For folks who may not be aware of that acronym, historically black college university. Would your, is your institution considered an HBCU?
No, it's not. So it's actually considered a minority-serving institution, MSI. We are pretty diverse and that our underrepresented students are around the same as our white students in terms of percentages, so minority serving.
Okay, so I've heard of a PWI, a predominantly white institution, which I went to at Seattle University. I'm pretty sure, I mean, well, Seattle is a predominantly white city. So the only folks that were black and brown, a lot of the black and brown folks who attended the college that I went to were on the athletics teams. And then now I'm learning of a minority.
Minority-serving institution.
Minority-serving institution, and then there's a minority-majority institution?
Right.
Huh, and do, do you happen to have the difference between those last two?
For the, for the most part, from my understanding, minority-majority is just percentages. From what I'm seeing, the MSI is extremely, it's extremely new. But it's, I guess specifically speaking to universities that are catering, catering to their students. In Georgia State, they have this whole initiative at the undergraduate level to eliminate some of the graduation disparities. They have like a early alert system that kind of helps those students specifically get the help that they need early on, so that they don't actually fall out of the academic pipeline. So that's, I think, probably the biggest difference, but I can't really say for sure, since they're so new and I don't really have a lot of information on it.
No, yeah, I appreciate that. We, we here at CP fully understand that we do not have a monopoly of knowledge and it is perfectly fine to be like, you know what, I don't have the answer to that. I say that quite a bit. Um, and so I'm, I'm wondering if, how, like, how far outside of just the college system are you even able to work out of? Or do you just recruit more like the undergrad level? Like if there's some 13-year-old who's in high school and is like a science whiz, would you be able to go recruit them? Or do you do like just like kind of college fairs where you're strictly talking to undergrad? Like what's the, what's, how far is your reach essentially?
Um, right now, I don't do, I only do like the college fairs and college and the, the events that are more specifically geared to students who are already in the undergrad, undergraduate program. But because like I said, the institute is still so small, my counterpart, who's the undergraduate coordinator, I have the ability to kind of tap on her and say, hey, this school over here has a bunch of students who might be interested. Or I have this instructor, I get that a lot, a lot of instructors from different schools are wanting somebody to come in and talk to students about what's available, what they should do next. The biggest thing that we say in, in my college is a lot of students say they want to go to med school, but the reality is only 30% of those students are going to make it there. And that's not to discourage anybody, that's just to say, look at your other options. And that's what our programs are essentially designed to do. So I kind of handle the graduate level, the students who are already in higher education and aren't necessarily sure what area of biomedical science and then my, and then my counterpart kind of handles that. But I, I kind of to add on to that, I would say that I do have a lot of reach because of the way that Georgia State is structured. A lot of our meetings are centralized, so I'm sitting in meetings with associate deans and directors of other colleges, where I kind of have the ability to get information, oh, hey, there's this event that's happening here or this policy that impacts your students indirectly, that I have the ability to kind of think about and then take to my director. Most of the time, I'm spearheading a lot of the policy changes. So I'd say that I will have a lot of reach outside of just recruiting or within graduate studies.
Just out of curiosity, how did you even find this job? Just before, we've had, we've had a couple of new people call, like, join the call. So just real quick, before you answer that, could you just say your title one more time? And then maybe just give us a quick, like, just a quick rundown on how you even got into this position? Because your undergrad seems to be in something vastly different than, than what you're doing. So if you could just let us know what you did for undergrad and grad school and then your job title? And then like, how did you even, how did you even find this position?
Yeah, so I'm the graduate program coordinator for the Institute for Biomedical Sciences at Georgia State University. My undergrad was in financial planning and economics, and then my masters is in higher education administration. And it's funny because I actually found this position. I had a student position in the School of Business at VCU, where I was working with the development office, essentially putting on the investors' events that they needed to help get money for the school. And after I graduated, I went to Wells Fargo for a while. I hated it. And I quit after three months and I didn't have anything else lined up. And I just so happened to see a position in the School of Business open in the graduate studies office. So that's how I got started and kind of learned the basics of higher education. I started mainly working with the admissions process. So I really got to understand the ins and outs of what that looks like from a business perspective. And then I moved to the Center for Translational Research in the VCU School of Medicine side. And that's how I got into the science part. And then I decided I wanted to move to Georgia. And it just so happened, one of my friends sent me this position. I'm like, oh, this is, this is perfect. So that's how I got into higher education. It's really a huge accident.
You know, how I got into this job, actually, I got tricked by, with a chocolate chip cookie. A couple of years ago, somebody sat me down and handed me a cookie, was like, I got this idea. And you know, here we are now. So fully understand how like life kind of just throws curveballs at you. Um, so one of the questions I really want folks to hear is, what are some of the key differences in how black and brown applicants navigate and are perceived during the application admission process? And how did those differences contribute to enrollment disparities, especially like in STEM field?
So black and brown students are more likely to be first-generation students. So they're a lot less likely to have family members or mentors or even a family member with a mentor that they can kind of be tapped in with to get some of the information on what colleges are really looking for. And then, to be completely honest, a lot of higher education institutions are not really the best at fully explaining what it is that they are looking for on, on the website for having that information openly available for students to access. And if it is on the website, it's buried under a whole bunch of stuff. So that if you're not on that website constantly, you wouldn't know where to find stuff. So that's the biggest, one of the biggest, biggest ways that they navigate it differently. They're kind of, a lot of students are going in blind. They're, they have this general idea of what the admissions process looks like. And then oftentimes, once they're in it, it, it doesn't, it's not, what they've submitted is not lining up with what the committee might want to see or something like, something like that. And then another thing, a huge thing, entrance exams, SATs, GREs, MCATs. So there is little to no scientific evidence that those entrance exams actually predict how successful a student is going to be in a graduate program or even an undergraduate program. The only thing it predicts is how much, how many additional resources a student has access to. So did they have access to prep courses? Are they working with a tutor, that sort of thing? Which is more so related to how much money you have and then what area you live in, whether those opportunities are even available for you to even tap into. So those are the two biggest things. A lot of the, the black and brown students, they're, they're kind of going in blind. They don't necessarily know how to, say, if a student has a lower GPA. That's not always a deal breaker, but a lot of students don't know how to make their application say, I have lower grades, but this is why, and this is how I can overcome that in a graduate program, for example. So those are the two biggest things. And then the ways that students are perceived differently. I think that's part of the problem. All of the students that enter the academic pipeline and they apply to a program, they're looked at the same exact way, which is, that's, that's not how, the students don't present the same way. So students who have a lot more resources and are able to pay for those prep courses or tutors and things of that nature are going to have higher grades, higher entrance exam grades, but they might not have as much leadership experience. They might not have the best letters of recommendation, that sort of thing, or even work experience outside of their education. Black and brown students present a little bit differently because of the socioeconomic impacts that they have to experience a lot of the time. So for example, a student who, I use myself as an example. So when I was in, in college, I was using the post 9/11 GI bill. So I essentially didn't need to work while I was in college. But there were a lot of people, a lot of my friends who had to work their way through college. So for me, I had all the time in the world to study. And my friends who were splitting their time between having to study and working a full job so that they can put themselves through school, our profiles are not going to look the same. And that's the same for any students who might be from other racial groups. So that's the biggest thing, I would say, that in terms of perception, students for the most part aren't looked at the same, but they shouldn't be.
I just want, I just want that to sink in a little bit, because that is, that's, I mean, it's a, I think for black and brown people like that makes sense to us. Because, I mean, I'm not a first-generation college person. My mom is an overachiever and a spot. Um, also, my mom won the Truman Scholarship for the state of Washington in like 2005, six, five, something, 2001 of them. Oh, 2005, thanks, mom. 2005. So like, I, I grew up in an environment and like my family, my family's from Kenya. My family's been a very education-heavy, um, family, but that also like translates differently when you come to an American like schooling system, right? And in American schooling system with my mom, didn't fully understand the system herself. I'm learning the system and there's like all these like translation barriers where like it makes sense for her in Kenya, if it's one way, but like here, it makes sense a different way. So when I, when it came time for me to apply for colleges, like I basically had to do that by myself. Not because my mom couldn't help me, but because my mom was working and she had like business to attend to. And I think a lot of times, we don't realize how much responsibilities black and brown kids have, because I, I still had to figure it out. What my mom was expecting was that when she got back, I was, I was like in college. And if I wasn't, then like I was, you know, there was going to be, I probably wouldn't be here anymore, because my mom was taking me out. But I can understand, like, that fully resonates with me, because I also had to work through college. And mainly because I didn't want to have my mom paying for like my living in San Francisco. She had to take care of like herself also. And so this idea that black and brown kids usually have additional responsibilities on top of them, just trying to stay on top of their grades. And if you don't have a counselor or some advocate in school that understands that, predict, I went to a particularly very rich, very private, very Jesuit college institution, where in my sociology class, this kid was like, oh yeah, I crashed, I crashed my Ferrari the other day, but my dad's going to buy me another one. And I was like, sir, can I get a Honda? Like, is your dad passing those out? I don't need, you know, you keep the sports car. Like, could I just get like a Civic if possible? So I can understand that in that moment, I really realized like, oh my goodness, like you're never going to understand what it took for me to get into the school. And I know probably the reason I got in, when I got in, because I also applied late, was because they needed more black people that were not part of the athletics, right? And so there's also like this quota system of like, look at us, we're diverse and we're like 10%. And I was like, 10% of what? Like, if you put all the minorities together, we can make up 10%. So I definitely like, I, I hope that that sinks in for folks when you're thinking about this very white area in Seattle and what, you know, kind of class and college makeups look like in this space versus what they may look like in a different, in a different state. And Georgia definitely has a higher black population than Seattle, but as you can see, like these disparities that black and brown folks are going to through, doesn't really matter if there's a high population of black people or not. Access is really important, which brings us to this question from Cynthia. Cynthia says, I read the Cell article on patching the leaks in STEM and was struck by the plethora of resources for minority students in STEM. Is access to these resources highly competitive? Have you found them to be helpful in your work with students at Georgia State? Thank you for that.
That's a really good question. So yes, it, access is extremely competitive. A lot of the times, those programs and the space that they have is based off of how much funding they get from the university as well as the NIH, that's the National Institute of Health, I believe, is the acronym. But they usually fund those programs and give them the money that they need to get started. But I think the bad thing about those programs that has started to become an issue in the admissions process is admissions committees have started to use those almost as a way to exclude other students who weren't able to get into those programs. It's, it's like if you're comparing the two students who might have access to this, to a program like the IMSD or Mark's program, like that we're talking about here. That student is going to get priority because they've already been vetted in a way. If they were good enough to get in the program, then they're okay. Chances are, they're going to be okay once they get into a graduate program. But that, that doesn't always mean that the student who wasn't able to get into the program isn't a quality student as well. So I definitely think it's, it's really good, those programs are great for helping students to get a better idea of what graduate programs are looking for, the specific steps that they need to go through in order to be looked at as a competitive applicant in STEM programs. And then it does a really good job at giving black and brown students a sense of community, which is super, super important. That's one of the, the larger reasons students fall out of the pipeline is because they're in these areas where they're always being othered and they're being looked at as the one person who made it. And it's, it's a lot of pressure, so it's helpful for the student. But I think on the backend, it's, it's starting to kind of evolve a bit to where it could potentially become harm, harmful.
Uh, that slippery slope of support, it can get a little intense. There's a question in here from Nancy. Is the racial makeup of the admissions committees changing at all? I'm presuming it's still predominantly white.
Yes, it is still predominantly white. I wouldn't say it's changing only because the faculty makeup isn't changing at all. Usually admissions committee are faculty that are pulled into the, pulled in to serve on the committee for a certain period of time. And for the most part, we still have a huge disparity of black and brown faculty members who are being hired and retained. So if we don't have the black and brown faculty to pull in, then that kind of leaves us with the same old admissions pool that, or admissions committee pool that we've always had.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, because I was black and I brought my mom, who sounds like an immigrant, because we are immigrants is the reason I got into Seattle U when I applied in July. And I got in like a week later. So yay, diversity. Um, what is the biggest but unknown misconception about black and brown folks in higher education? Or education in general, from your perspective and kind of what you've been able to glean? And maybe even just check your own personal experience?
I think the biggest misconception that I see is that there are no quality higher education students that are black or brown and that they're, they're underrepresented because they aren't interested in the field or they're just not high-quality, high-quality enough to get in, which is not the case. Like I said earlier, they just look differently on paper. One of the biggest things that a lot of colleges are trying to do now, instead of relying so heavily on GPA and entrance exam, since we already know that GREs and MCATs, they're not good predictors of success. Really, what's a good predictor of success are non-cognitive competencies such as perseverance, such as self-starting, things like that. The things that are more so ingrained in you from, from growth and not just something that you can kind of pay to learn. Especially in a biomedical science graduate program specifically, you could go through an experiment that you need to graduate seven times. And each time, it's not working, but you can't just give up. And if you do, you're just kind of, you're, you're done. So that's one of the biggest things that I've seen personally. Non-black and brown students who may have come in with a 4.0 GPA and they have the highest GRE scores, they don't do well because they're not used to overcoming anything. Or they don't do well because they are not used to having, they're not used to having to speak up for this app for themselves, advocate for themselves, they're not used to having to ask questions. They're used to kind of always having things come easily to them, which doesn't bode well, especially in biomedical science, when you are getting so many no's and your experiments aren't working and there's just so much negative that comes that happens that you kind of have to overcome in order to make it to your goal. So.
Yeah, I hadn't even thought of that in, in the lens of like a biomedical. I don't, I may have told some of y'all, because y'all are like the loyal attenders of AJ's session, so thank you. Um, but when I was in 10th grade, my mom was fully convinced I was going to be a doctor. Um, just disclaimer, I, I was and very good at sciences. Um, and in 10th grade, my mom decided that she was gonna, she was gonna put me in a science program. And so I ended up at UW doing some genetic study, something or other, with this lady who happens to be a pretty famous geneticist out in the UK, but I didn't know. It was just like, oh, that's just mom's friend who's going to have me like doing the heteroferesis and trying to figure out the correlations between like malaria and sickle cell and what we can do about that. So I'm like, in 10th grade, doing this like special project for this lady. Um, and all around me are like grad students. And I could feel, I remember thinking about it, like, like I could feel how palpable the stress was in that room. And then you've got this like rambunctious little sophomore who's coming in and he's like, hey guys, you guys want to go get apple juice? Do you guys want to go get sandwiches or a donut or something like, girl, get out my face? And that was disheartening in one sense, because it was like, oh, this is not the type of environment like I want to be in when I grow up. It's like, it's going to be this miserable and this sad. But also, I didn't realize how obviously high-stress that environment is, right? So I can understand when you have kids who may be gifted and they come in and it's like, oh, this stuff was like super easy. And you've got these other folks who had to like struggle and study really hard. And that was one of the main reasons that I was like, this science thing, like this, not for me. And then of course, I win like a physics award in my senior, my senior year. My mom was like, you should think about this. And I was like, no, I'm going to become a historian. And here, here we are, like decades later. But I can definitely understand how high-stress that is. And I feel like part of the reason why I probably could have survived the sciences, if I, if I had the urge to survive the sciences, is because of like all the stuff that I've had to deal with. So I really, that perseverance thing makes sense. Because I remember when I was in college at Seattle U, this kid like not knowing how to do laundry. And I was like, I don't understand, like you're, you're like 18. How do you not know how to, I mean, you're just like, there's instructions. You take the clothes, you put them in the thing, you put the detergent. And one kid put dish detergent and like flooded our floor. And I was just like, but like, why would you push dish soap? And he was like, well, it's soap. And so there's these like little moments, I think, that of responsibility that a lot of black and brown kids get from an earlier stage. And I don't know what that's about, but I've definitely noticed it more in like black and brown households where you have responsibilities at an early age. My mom had to travel. My mom used to work with Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And so she was like, hey, girl, I gotta go run this trip with like former president Jimmy Carter and Bill Gates Senior. You have to stay home by yourself at 13. And I granted, that probably wasn't the best, but there were circumstances that are underlying that, that this was the only option that we had. You have a single parent with an only child. We had no family, nobody knew us in Seattle. And so my mom was like, I gotta like handle things. So because of that, from the age of 13 on, I've basically So because of that, from the age of thirteen on, I've basically spent an extended period of time by myself. Which means like I had to figure out, I gotta get myself up for school. I have to, you know, cook dinner. I have to do my homework. I have to make sure that all the things that I'm responsible for are kept in check. And also. My mom was like, if you wanna watch cable, you gotta put this bill in the mail on this date, otherwise no cable for you. If you want lights to do your homework with, you gotta put this bill in this. So I fully understand. I understood what it meant to function in an adult world by the time I got to college. So college was cake for me. And so the things that I had to overcome were my interactions with these white professors. Like that was the thing that I was like, okay. I got kicked out to win my anthropology classes because this lady had traveled to Kenya. And was going back and be like, oh yeah, there's so many slums in Kenya and everybody is so poor in this. And I was like, ma'am. I was in a three-story house with my mom and she worked for a four to five hundred company, so I don't understand. But because she didn't like being challenged by this little black girl, I ended up getting a call from my advisor and be like, yeah, that teacher doesn't want you in their class anymore. And so my biggest battle in college in a predominantly white institution was having to prove. My brilliance over and over and over again, and also challenges was purposely being black and brown people. That was not truthful. Granted, there are, there is a really big slum in Kenya and also that is not all of what Kenya is. Just like black and brown folks do have certain disparities that are specific to our community. And also if you're not looking at what is causing those disparities, then you're doing black and brown kids a disservice because you're not actually looking at the bigger picture. So I really appreciate you talking about how like it doesn't look the same on paper for very obvious reasons to us. Um, and I think that's really important to input to, cause also we have some educators in this space also. And so I'm wondering how that this message then resonates to their, like kind of historical, um, interaction with the education system. Um, there's a, there's a question in here from Carrie, thank you. Um, then what do you do when black and brown folks who do not present well on paper? Do you learn more about the folks during the, by interviewing them? And I'd like to add, do they even get to the interview like process, um, in that regard? That's a good question. Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So I think. I've taken a really hands-on approach. Typically staff are not included in the admissions process, but because of the way. Our college is set up, I really have a lot of, um, a lot of ability to kind of push people. So I've learned what the committee is looking for in terms of the science, cause I'm not a scientist. I don't know specifically what they're looking for. But after a one admission cycle, I kind of had an idea of what they were looking for. And because I'm a black person and because I've, I experienced that, I had that experience. I'm able to kind of look at our applicants and say, this is a quality student. They just don't look that way on paper. Or I might have the interaction with somebody who is calling me and asking me questions about the admissions process. What shows that they're taking initiative or that they are applying way ahead of time. That also is a good predictor of somebody who's gonna be, um, be successful. So in those cases, I make sure to push them towards the committee. And it's almost like, hey, you need to review this person, maybe look again, sort of thing. Um, and then they. We do have a shortlist that we use to interview students, which is where we kind of review and, um. Get a better idea of which non-cognitive competencies the student actually has fulfilled through. Maybe their personal life, their work experience, that sort of thing.
Yeah, um, a good follow-up question to that from Rebecca. Thank you for asking this question. I like the recognition of non-cognitive abilities. How are they taken into account in the admission process?
Definitely, um, the interview is a huge part of that. We're actually redoing our application. Well, I'm redoing our application now. Um, to include, um, better ways of this. So target, instead of a full personal statement. A lot of times when students are asked to write a personal statement, it turns, it turns into a sob story. They think that you want, you wanna hear about all of the bad that they, that happened to them and that they've overcome, which. Partially we do because some of that is important, but giving students more targeted questions, how did you overcome something or? Tell me about a time you, like the, the job questions that we hate to answer, but are really necessary. So, um, breaking the personal statement down into essay questions is gonna be one of the ways that we use to kind of. Um, evaluate which non-cognitive competencies a student has. Um, and then the admissions, the interview process as well.
And, um, real quick, does your school, is your school still requiring, um, like the G R Es and M cats and all that?
We got rid of that last year.
Oh man, if I don't have to do a G R E, I might apply to grad school. Calm down. I'm just saying, the G R, mom, you come, Charles, okay, first of all. Exactly. Do you see? I'm at work. Go ahead, Charles, just unmute. I look, it's, it looks like, okay, good. All right. I gave him a chance. Um, okay, we have a question in here from, mom, please do not call me later and say that we're gonna have a conversation about this. I'm just, I was just saying that one of the main hindrances in me tr- thinking of attending. A grad school program is, you know, the test, cause I do not test well. I can do all of my work. I can get a hundred percent on every single homework assignment. But I didn't realize I had test anxiety until one of my professors at Seattle U was like, hey, you seem to be getting a hundred percent on all of these assignments. And yet on your tests, there seems to be something funny going on. But also I was lucky enough to have a white professor. At Seattle U who was like, hey, let's take a step back and figure out like what's going on here. Rather than just being like, oh, this kid probably cheats on their homework and that's why they suck at test. So I, I appreciate the fact that y'all got rid of that. Cause me and tests, I just start to sweat. I forget every single thing that I had just been studying for. But it's not like my memory is bad. I mean, I literally could run down the whole Civil War timeline for you right now. But put it on a test with some Scantron, like it's a, it's a no, it's a no for me. Um. There's another question in here from Nancy, when black and brown students get to the grad programs. Is there intentional ways of creating an environment or support that encourages them to stay in the program?
Yeah, so my biggest thing is helping the students to kind of create a, um. An environment where they feel like they can support each other. Um, and then I also, I think. Probably because of my age where a lot of my students are around the same age as I am, so they. Are, they feel a lot more comfortable telling me things than they would say my director. Or anybody else that's in our, working in our college or maybe even their instructor. So it's. For right now, um, because like I said, we're still so new and I'm pushing things as, as fast as I can, but money. For the most part, I try my best to make sure that I fill in the gap in that regard. If they're having issues with professors that they don't know how to navigate, they know that they can come to me and I'm not gonna go back to the instructor and. And tell them what was said. Um, I've gotten really good at, um, helping students navigate some of those issues. That they might otherwise be navigating by themselves or maybe even support people, support staff don't know are issues for students of color. Um, so that's the biggest thing. I try to keep my ears and eyes open and make sure that students know. Specifically, if you need to call and talk to me about anything, you can do that. So.
Yeah, um, I had a, I had an advisor like that and then. She got kicked out because she was, she was rabble rousing the students. Well, you know, her name was also Audrey, so there you go. Um, there's a question in here, um, can you give an example or two of the types of essay questions you're developing for non-cognitive abilities?
Uh, I don't have any off the top of my head, um.
Also, this might be insider information, so we may not actually be able to get.
I don't have any off, off the top of my head, but I do have an example rubric that I can send to you and you can pass it to.
Yeah, I'll send it to, I'll send it to folks on the call. Or if you're interested, just put your name in the chat and then I'll send it to you. So I'm not spamming all y'alls. Um, inboxes. Uh, thank you for that. Um, there's another one in here. Do you have a real word, like wor- real world example of a student you've worked with whose faced challenges in pursuing a STEM education? And overcame them and one who did not and dropped out and the factors that led to those outcomes?
Okay, um. So one person that I could say, um. Okay, yeah. So I've had, I had one student who, um, she looked a lot different than a lot of our traditional students. Because she didn't go directly from her undergraduate degree to her graduate degree. A lot of times in STEM education specifically, the transition between an undergraduate and a graduate degree is the hardest. Um, step to overcome in the academic pipeline. Once you get into graduate school, it's a little bit easier for you to keep going. If you wanted to get a terminal degree. Um, she had been out of, out of school for ten years and actually worked in industry. Um, and she was waitlisted the first time she applied. They didn't really give her application, in my opinion, as thorough of, of a review, um. But after we had a few interviews and some other students fell through. And I'm like, this student has a lot of industry experience. She doesn't look the same as everybody else. But it's gonna be super important to re-review this student because she's gonna, she's gonna bring a different perspective to the classroom. Which is always what admissions committees should be considering is different perspectives in the classroom, because that's how students grow. Um, I think one of the biggest things that she has, um. Had to overcome is learning how to navigate the, the issues that come up in a classroom. Especially in a graduate program, figuring out, um, who your mentor is gonna be in a PhD program is. Is really, really important to the point where if you choose the wrong mentor in a, in a PhD program. That might be as far as you go, because they are, they're expected to write your letter of recommendation. If you wanna go to a postdoc. They are the ones who are telling you what, um, conferences and, um, what, what you need to be doing along the pipeline. Because it's not just your degree, um, requirements that you're worrying about. You're also having to present at conferences. You're having to do specific projects so that you have information to put into a publication, um, things like that. So that's, that, from my experience, I would say most students who had trouble. Getting into the program, got into the program are persisting because they have support navigating higher education itself. Um, white students honestly already have that. They have the ability. We just saw the college scandal where there's this guy who is being paid to walk students through the admissions process. And before that happened, I had no idea that was even a thing and I worked in higher education. So just, I think that's the biggest problem a lot of students have in persisting. And then I would say it was the other half of the question, students who did not and actually dropped out. Um, I would say. The only experience I personally have of a student who didn't finish their program, they, their interest changed. So they didn't drop out of our program and stopped going to school. They dropped out and, and went to law school instead.
I mean, all right, yeah, go from hard to hard, like.
Yeah.
I get it. Um, thank you, thank you for that question, Cynthia. There's another question in here. If your program received a huge grant and you could affect one major systemic change in higher education, what would be the first thing that you start with?
I would implement mandatory, um. Diversity training, but not in the way that they are implementing it now where you, everybody kind of goes and sits in a room. And talks about their feelings and that sort of thing. More so of, um, specifically the National Research Mentoring Network. They have, um, training specifically for mentors. So the mentoring process, like I said, is extremely important. But that's one of the hidden parts of higher education that you don't really see on the surface level. It's so ingrained in the institutions that there's not a lot of oversight unless you have a director or, um, a department head. Who's, who's, um, dedicated to really paying attention and making sure that mentorship is strong in that regard. So implementing training to help people, um, see and understand from the beginning to the end. Black and brown students don't look the same during the admissions process. Black and brown students don't operate the same. Once they get into a program, a lot of them have a lot of, um, different factors going on in their personal lives that, that may change the way. That they interact in the program, i.e. twenty twenty was rough for a lot of people, especially black and brown students. And our students still have to perform, um, given consideration for that and not expecting students to still come into the lab. For forty to sixty hours a week when they're having to deal with things like that. Um, understanding that, um, their voice is a lot louder than they think it is. Um, these students are depending on them to speak up for them and, and help them along the process. So if they, the one thing that I have seen is, um, mentors writing a letter of recommendation. But instead of saying, oh, this student know how, knows how to do this, this, um, scientific technique. And they've done great. And then this is their project. They, they turn to more characteristic, oh, this person's amenable. They get along well with everybody. That's not helpful when it comes to review for higher positions. Or if they wanna go into academia after they graduate. So I think the biggest thing is retraining the people. Because at the end of the day, it's the people that are holding on to a lot of the old ways. That we've been doing things and a lot of the old ways that we've been doing things were purposely put in a place to exclude black and brown people.
Me, might drop on that. Um, thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, that's, that's true. I am where I am because of some really great mentors in my life. Um, also I get to work with one of my mentors, Dr. Scott. So being able to be in a position where I get to work with my mentor, learn from my mentor. Um, and have my mentor be invested in not just me as like a historian, but me as a person definitely, um, led to some change. Um, my mother, my mother has a comment in here, cause I'm not gonna call her by her first name. She said, when I received the Truman Scholarship, I had a mentor who was a person of color, who was so invested in my success. And many students who needed to apply for grants don't even know where to start. That is very, very true. It took my mom going through school for me to even realize that there was like this big old book of like scholarships and grants. And literally you just like flip through and you apply to as many of them that, um, makes sense. Um, also, part of the reason that my mom and I were able to survive, my mom didn't work when she started grad school. Undergrad, undergrad, right? Okay, okay, just making sure, making sure. So part of the reason we were able to like have a roof over our heads, food, all of that. Is because my mom was just really good at applying for grants. And so we literally lived off of her grant money all throughout her schooling. And that in and of itself like didn't make sense to me until I got to college. And I don't even think it fully made sense to me until I got out of college. In understanding how persistent she needed to be in applying for grants. And some of these grants were like. Five hundred dollars, it pays for like two books or something, in which you read three chapters of that book. And then you can't even return it or sell it. And so you're just stuck with this three hundred and fifty dollar book that you used for all of two days. Um, but that also was five hundred dollars that didn't have to come out of her pocket. That came out of, you know, out of the grants and that she was able to apply for. And so by default, I would be talking to kids at school and be like, oh yeah, my mom just applied with this like book thing that she had. Let me take a picture and send it to you. Like it is, the information is somewhere in there. But yeah, definitely. For sure, like a lot of folks don't realize how much free money is out there, um, and how to even start applying for those. Or how to write a grant application and all that jazz. Um, Nancy wants to know, if you could please repeat the name of the DI training program. For mentors, please.
It's, um, it's done through the National Research Mentoring Network. The website is, um, N R M N dot net, I believe.
Awesome, thank you. Um, and I will get, I'll get any information that we have in this conversation, um, from Takiya. And then email it out to folks that are interested. Um, so with this month being the sixty-seventh anniversary of Brown V Board. What challenges do you see that tie into the historical narrative around education? And access to resource and information for black and brown folks?
Yeah, so I think, uh, the two that we've kind of mentioned, uh, both hinted at is, um. A lot of black and brown students are having to overcome obstacles that are now looked at as a part of higher education. You just are supposed to get letters of recommendation. You're just supposed to do the interest exams. You're supposed to write the personal statement. But I don't think a lot of people have really asked the question, why do we have those? Because initially they, they might've been required, but they aren't nearly as strenuous or looked at in the way that they are now. Um, so the admissions process is a huge barrier. Um, interest exams, like we discussed, letters of recommendation with no merit or no substance. That aren't really helpful and then misunderstanding what a student, what a quality student looks like on paper. Um, and how to even, even if you do get an applicant that looks good on paper, how does a committee review them without bias? Or is, is the committee doing group think? Is one person saying, ah, this student doesn't look that great? Or I, I heard about that school, they don't have a good research department, that sort of thing. And then all of a sudden, the rest of the committee falls in line with that thinking. Or is there a specific process behind the scenes where co- committee members are entering their comments separately? And then there's a final decision made by the director or the department head or something like that. What is, wh- what does the admissions process look like and how is it currently excluding students? And then I think another big one is, like we said, mentoring relationships, um. Um, a lot of first generation students, um, a lot of underrepresented minority students are first generation students as well. They often experience imposter syndrome. If there's nobody else that looks like them, it kind of is very hard to see yourself if you've never seen anybody do what you're trying to do. That's a huge thing. And then um that also leaves students with a limited knowledge, limited amount of knowledge of what they need to be doing in order to be successful in those areas. So they could go all the way through and get a PhD, but you didn't get a publication. You weren't the first author, so you're not a good student, that sort of thing. But that, that's something that a student would know if they had a quality mentoring relationship. Um, and when I say quality, I mean um, the mentor understands all of the different things that the student is experiencing and the student feels comfortable or knows how to ask the questions or the probing questions if they're not getting the information upfront. So I think that those specifically, um, they were put into place to keep people from persisting in STEM education specifically. Um, they're looked at as high ability um fields. And as we know, there is this misconception that black people aren't, don't have the high ability to kind of go and and persist in those programs, which really isn't the case because we've seen people with literally nothing do some very interesting things and and come up with discoveries that people who have biosafety level four labs and all the fancy equipment haven't even been been able to do, so.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent. Um, I mean, that's how I randomly ended up in malaria study in tenth grade. Um, by chance, and I was great at it. Also, it was not fun. Um, I'm sorry, mom, but I'm just not gonna be a doctor. I'm squeamish. It's, it's not going to happen. Um. And then uh for, so folks, we want to make sure that we also respect the fact that Takiya, you know, lives, um, not in Seattle. Um, so if you have any kind of last minute questions, please put those in the chat. Um, one of the, a couple of final questions I want to ask is, uh, what, um, what do diversity and inclusion efforts currently look like in education? What is missing from current conversations on this topic and how does that impact brown, uh, black and brown students?
I think a lot of diversity and inclusion conversations are mainly universities getting all of their black and brown staff in a room with maybe a few um white faculty and they're just sitting in a room talking about what, what the university could be doing or what the students could be experiencing. And I feel like they're, they're working backwards. Um, it's not about changing the structures of the college first. It's about educating people because no matter what the pro, the, the policies and procedures within higher education look like, there's still gonna be a person who has a bias, whether it's conscious or unconscious, that is gonna impact the way that the admissions, uh, the, the admission cycle goes. So essentially, instead of, okay, how do we fix this, fix this problem and you're looking to make structural changes? Those are all well, fine and great, but that doesn't help if there's somebody in the admissions process at, say, in another college somewhere who's decided, hmm, students from this specific country, I don't, I don't think all of them, they're just not good. And they just decide all of a sudden to just decide to no longer further review those students. That's, that's not how things should go and that's a person problem. So I think educating the faculty that are already within the institutions is gonna be the biggest thing. Um, and it'll help the universities kind of, once you get the people educated, it's a lot easier to, to tear down the old ideas instead of sitting in the room like they are now arguing with each other about why things should be the way they are now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally with that. As a person who literally works to help um folks see uh black and brown folks in a different light, um, it's amazing how um conscious we are of bias and how very unconscious a lot of white folks who have not had the opportunity to have conversations about race um are so unaware of uh their bias, right? Um, it's, it's those little moments. Um, I like to tell folks, like pay attention to the little moments when one, you're either in the minority in a space or you happen to be walking by some black or brown person and like what is that feeling that kind of comes over your body? Um, what I tend to notice is if I'm walking somewhere and there is a white woman in particular in front of me, um, most of the time because I look like this. Um, or I will be walking around like with my hood up, I make sure that there is an ample amount of space um between me and that white woman because if she feels unsafe, that could be my life. So imagine having to translate that kind of emotion and feeling into every aspect of my life in which I have to engage or interact with a white person. Right? It kind of shifts and it molds, but that al- always I have to be very aware of that white person's possible perception of me because that could definitely mean either a lack of opportunity for me, it could mean a, a lack of safety for me. It could mean, and it's interesting because it always means a lack of something, right? It's not like I'm going to get more out of this. Most of the time, it's going to take away something from me simply for existing. Right? Whether it's my, my brilliance and that whole like, wow, you're so articulate. Thank you, thank you all for not saying that to Takiya. I really fully appreciate nobody uh mentioning how articulate uh Takiya is because that is a thing that I know some white folks feel is a compliment. But think about the bias behind that. Why is it that the two of us would seem articulate to you? Because what other interactions have you had with a black or brown person that would cause our interaction, the way that we carry ourselves, the way that we speak to seem like it is more articulate than someone else? Those little, little biases can dictate the way that you function in your community and in your world. And also, if you hold a position of power in which you are uh making decisions that affect black and brown lives, then those little, you know, then you, if you're on the admissions board, right? You can kind of see how that trickles down. Um, so one of the things that we try to do here at CP is bring you um into contact with folks like Takiya so that one, you understand, I've said this many times, that black people are one, not a monolith. And two, my mom says this all the time, that talent is universal, but opportunity is not. And so one, I just want to say thank you for folks coming and supporting special sessions because the whole point of special session is to shine a light on dope black and brown women. And we have an awesome black woman with us today. And the last question I kind of want to ask is, um, one, if there's a way for folks to be able to support the work that you do and two, if there's one thing that you want folks to get out of this session today, um, what would that be?
Uh, you can always support uh by just using your influence, even if it's not specifically at my college or even your college, any college. So a lot of universities and colleges, they value their community partnerships. So if you just so happen to have a company, a nonprofit, or if you've ever volunteered your time at a university, they're always looking to those um, those entry points to kind of help with internships, externships, job placements, um, have people come in as guest speakers, that sort of thing. And so what I always say is you have a lot of leverage to just ask questions because once you start asking questions, then that tells the internal people. Okay, the people on the outside are asking questions about um how we selected this special group of students who got to attend this workshop, something like that. It gives, it gives the people on the inside the idea that, okay, people do care about this. It's not just the black and brown faculty and staff on the inside saying this is an issue, this is a problem. It's people on the outside as well who also care that this is an issue. What are you all doing to kind of mitigate this? Um, are the selections for this internship, if you're recommending students for an internship, how did you select these, this group of students to send to me? That sort of thing. So just ask, ask the questions, um, how students are selected. Um, ju- just ask questions. Because a- as a partner, um, you're, you have a lot of influence in that regard. They care what our partners think.
Yeah, thank you. That, and we, no, you know what? One thing that CP folks, community do, we ask a lot of good questions. There are some good question askers in here. Um, so we will, we will figure out kind of what that looks like within the Seattle space. Um, we have some really awesome people in our communities who are attached to some schools that at the very least could help guide us on how we would be able to do that. Um, and also, I just want to say thank you again for your time. It's been awesome talking to you. Um, if folks have any last minute questions, this is your final chance. Otherwise, we have to let Takiya go because it's time to get late um over a hard.
I do want to quickly comment. I see, um, I wish UNC didn't value their trustees. So I've actually had experience with a college who had a board of trustees who is very traditional, I would say. Um, one of the, one of the ways that you can kind of help to maybe change some attitudes at the trustee level is one of my jobs um as a student, they, I think they used me, but um I had the ability to go into different meetings with our board of trustees to give them an idea what my experience was like. Put a student in front of their face and give the, and tell, and have them tell the committee or the trustees what their experience is like. It, it may not help and it sometimes it puts the student in a, a weird position to be traumatized, but sometimes it's helpful. If you have a student like me who was willing to do that, then it was extremely helpful and um ended up with the school getting an endowment that was specifically earmarked for underrepresented students to um have money to go to school with. So I, I do know that the trustees, they have a lot of, a lot of say and all of put the students in front of their face is the best thing I can say in that regard.
Nice. Way to go, Nancy. Now we have, now we have a path. Um, awesome. So again, thank you very much, folks. As always, I tell you all this, please find some time to decompress. Thanks, mom. Um, please find some time to decompress um and process this information. If folks have questions for uh for Takiya that come up later, please just send them my way so we're not bombarding her inbox because you are, are very passionate and I will uh absorb your passion. Um, and I will get uh to the two folks who wanted um the information around the cognitive questions. I'll double back with Takiya and make sure that y'all get, um, y'all get access to those. And as always, it's a pleasure. Um, we are going to end. I know usually we do an after credit situation. Charles, do you need to say anything before I end the meeting? Because you tend to be the one that does the after hours thing. And I just want, I just want to, I just Takiya, this is Charles James Douglas III. He is our executive director and my boss. Um, Mr. Douglas, because you know, look, I just, I just want to give you an opportunity.
Uh, you know me so well. I just wanted to say, Takiya, uh, I'm super proud of you and the work that you do. You probably hear this all the time. Um, you, you are like a real life superhero for real. I'm just hearing the, the fight. Sometimes you're the only one in the room fighting and some, the future of, of, of leaders in this country in, in some areas of focus, like entirely depend upon your presence and your work. You have, you have charted the course. You have helped to universities to slam dunk students that would totally be a miss for them.
Right.
And if, I bet if we go back and we look at the number of students, like who exactly you helped and the multiplying effect of that and what they've gone on to do and their careers is probably really impressive. And so I just, this, I mean, I, our country probably owes you, so I thank you. And thanks for hanging out with us for a little bit, just a little bit.
Being here, this is great.
That was really good, Charles. Um, you know, sometimes you, you just, you come in with the sauce. I appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
I thought I was gonna give you, you thought I was gonna come at you and give you some heat for, I think we already did that.
I mean, but you're like, you've been doing it literally for a week straight, my guy. I feel like you just need a hug. You need a hug?
I just.
It's okay.
Okay, alright, alright. Takiya, we'll see you soon? I mean, at some point, we'll, we're gonna see Takiya live and in, in, in living color.
Well, we are going to Georgia at some point to go knock on doors, so.
A hundred percent. Look, everybody's, I think everybody here, I'm looking around the screen. We're all gonna be in Georgia at some point fighting a good fight, so we'll see you.
Some point, you know, when we will make a piss stop with Georgia State and walk around, where's Takiya?
I, I like, I like visitors.
They're just yelling, hey, somebody got your hair.
No, it'll be, it'll be Nancy being like, where are the trustees at? I'm gonna talk to y'all.
I heard that y'all go give enough money to black people. It will be Nancy and a hundred percent will be Nancy. Yelling, y'all gonna say hi to Takiya, but I, bring the trustees to me.
I want to see them. I am so mad for Nicole Hannah Jones. I mean, I am mad, mad, mad. And wait, can I just interject one thing here that is really bugging me and I, it's with Texas and um they are trying to legislate and so is New Hampshire. And there's like five other states that are trying to legislate that real history cannot be taught. The teachers are not allowed to teach it. And they're doing it at the state legislative level, like they're codifying it for real, not just the United Daughters of the Confederate nonsense, which is insidious enough, but they're like making it with penalties. I mean, that's, that's insane for our future generations. So I'm just like, I'm just having a, a bit of um, I'm having a bit of a hard time right now.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Nancy, welcome to life as a black person.
Yeah.
I was like, this is just like the days of Nat Turner when Nat Turner decided to learn how to read and all of a sudden he led a rebellion and then Virginia was like, we can't let blacks read because this is too dangerous. So this is definitely something that's systemic. It's like we're, we're just looping back around, right? And that's why, part of the reason I wanted to make sure we won, honor the Brown v Board of Education um decision and also bring in somebody who's literally fighting to get black and brown people more representation in higher ed into the space and also black women, which is usually the answer for everything. Um, part of that is because we're in a situation where the education system is literally being attacked with falsehood um from people who don't want honest representation of history. It's not even like we're trying to make black people seem great. Black people have been great since day one. We're just trying to like put that in a, in a non biased package of like, this is, this is actually just a fact that happened. That's why these sessions are really key for me is because I get to learn a bunch of stuff that's just fact. Like, it's just Abraham Lincoln actually didn't really care for black people for a while. And it's like, that's just a fact. It's not a divisive statement. It's just like, nah, there's receipts for it. And so with, with civics, there's so many angles that we can attack civics with and Takiya being the superhero that she is. It is, it's like Wonder Woman's twin sister Nubia, you know, who had like more power than Wonder Woman. So like, I'm, I'm with it, I'm with it, I'm with it. But um, yeah, let's not hold Ms. Johnston because we know how we are CP. Charles, thank you so much for your words. Really appreciate them. I highly and completely agree. Takiya, thank you for your time. Um, we will be uh staying in contact and seeing how best we can continue to support you. If you need some support from the CP crew, you got it. You need a bunch of people to call, folks or some trustees. Like, let us know and we will do our best to uh to support. Um, aside from that, bye, folks. Bye. Have a good evening. Thank you, Takiya.
Thanks so much.
You.
Have a good night.